And then, let's see, I can bring Samra in as a panelist. So at this point, we're good to go. Start the meeting.
Okay, so welcome to the October seventeenth City of Lacey Planning Commission meeting. Call the meeting to order. We'll call everyone, everybody on the planning commission here except Daphne, who's on vacation, defer. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda and consent agenda items.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Gail, seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Okay, we will move on to the large list of public comments. Brian, anything written in?
Nope, I, in the attendees, only see staff. I don't see anybody on my end. I don't see anybody at City Hall either, but just in case, this is an opportunity to address the planning commission. If you'd like to do so, use the raise hand function and we can go ahead and bring you in. Aaron, if you can get into the participants and promote Samra to panelist, I don't think I have the ability to do that. Otherwise, I don't see anybody for public comment. So no public comment tonight.
Alright, no public comment. So commission members' reports, Karen?
Nothing to report.
Gail?
Nothing.
Nothing from me? Nothing from me?
No report.
I do have a small topic to share. Sure. I've been attending the City of Lacey Police Academy Community Outreach Program. Sure if everyone's familiar with that, but it is very worthwhile and gives you great insight to the organizational structure, the rules that they do their job by, the organization plans for the future. And they actually have you have an opportunity to go out and try their weapons and drive their cars. And it's just a really fascinating program.
Turn the light on.
Yeah, and they show you, you know, what the rules are and how they follow them and what they encounter in Lacey. And it's just an incredible program. And I've gotten a lot out of it. And it goes until on November 2nd, so I'm a little more than halfway through.
You know how many times they run that a year?
I don't know that.
What's that called again?
It's called the Citizens Academy.
Citizens Academy. Thank you.
If I remember right, twice a year.
Way back in twenty seventeen, they called it that.
And you get to meet the officers and chief and everybody. It's really amazing. I've really enjoyed it. If you have an opportunity, I.
And our newest member, Jeff Gadman, we welcome him aboard the planning commission. Jeff, you want to take a minute just to tell the group about yourself?
Yeah, so my family first moved to Lacey in nineteen sixty-eight. We were sixty-six hundred people. College Street was a two-lane with ditches. It was a literal farm-to-market road. We moved into Little Community of Bel Air. At the time where the Walgreens is, they're at Lacey Boulevard and College, that was the new Albertson's. Lacey managed to lure them out of downtown Olympia, so. So I've been here a while. I went to work for the assessor's office in nineteen eighty-six and I spent a little over thirty years there. Most of the time involved directly with land use, talking to property owners, business owners, developers, people in finance. And learning about how project finance works and that sort of thing. And in two thousand seventeen, I was appointed and elected county treasurer and have been doing that ever since. And then somewhere in there, I was city councilperson for a little while. So I think I bring a perspective that I really feel like I can bring some meaningful input into this group. And I'm really looking forward and excited as hell to be back involved in helping shape my city's future.
Welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we'll move on to department report. Ryan, are you handling that or?
I'll let Grant take the reins tonight.
I'll, I'll start. Hans and I attended yesterday at the briefing to the Board of County Commissioners on the joint plan. And I'm going to apologize for not being here for that meeting. I was on vacation in Spain, but I did watch it. And just want to thank you guys for all you did to, to be very professional and help move the plan forward. The briefing went, it was, I was frustrated watching it. I can't even imagine how it was to be there. The briefing to the board went well. It sounds like the only area that the board members expressed concern over was the low-density block consolidation. And Hans is going to get them more information on that and will continue to work towards trying to get the development regulations consistent between the two jurisdictions, which will be a huge win when we start the N X H analysis next year. So the hearing, I believe, is on the, I want to say the seventh of November, but we'll send that out to you if you want to watch the Board of Commissioners hearing.
Grant, can I ask a question? Is Lacey the only one that's different than the rest of the groups, Olympia, you know?
Well, there, I would say that, no, the county is very behind on all the joint plans. So they're just catching up now with the twenty fifteen updates. I think we're the last in line for the joint plan update. So in that sense, we're lagging on. I think the issue for the county may be a little bit bigger because our UGA is so big in population-wise. So there's more development in the unincorporated area of the UGA.
Sure. Okay. Any questions for?
I will, if I could add that I did have the opportunity to correct a couple of the misinformation pieces that were expressed by the Thurston County Plan Commission members, including the, the fact that you guys did a great job of addressing this at the meeting. But it was consistently stated that Lacey is a culprit of urban sprawl, and I'm not sure what that is. I've heard of suburban sprawl, urban sprawl, but, but I, but I was able to let the commissioners know that in fact, Lacey is the most dense city in Thurston County, in the good way. As well as the most diverse. So, so we're not only meeting our, our GMA expectations of densification, but we're actually ahead of the city of Olympia as far as being, being dense in a good way. I thought it went as well as it could.
Yeah, I think we all, through that process, got a little frustrated with some of the questions. You know, and assumptions and things about pools. Yeah, it was, it was a little, little spotty. And hopefully that moves forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Alrighty, Ryan, did you want to add anything?
Nope, the only thing I'll add is maybe we can reserve some time at the end of the meeting to do a quick kind of calendar check-in. We just kind of started to do that a little bit before the official meeting started. We can have a little calendar review at the, at the end of the meeting after, at the end of the agenda.
Okay, we'll make sure that happens. There is no public hearing, so we will move on to new business. Right, oh, she got in, so.
We have Samra Seymour here, senior planner, to talk a little bit about some flood hazard regulations that are requirement for participation in the flood hazard insurance program, so.
These are recommendations for revisions to the Lacey Municipal Code fourteen point three four.
That's right. So Samra's here to brief you on some draft regulation amendments that'll be scheduled for a future public hearing and recommendation.
Alright, thank you, Ryan. Good evening, everyone. As Ryan said, I am a senior planner in the current planning division. And tonight I do have some, we'll call them softball code amendments for your consideration, and we'll kind of get into that in a little bit. And fair warning, it's not the most exciting topic that's going to be in front of you this year. And frankly, it's not the most exciting topic you're going to probably have in front of you this evening. But regardless, we'll, uh, we're going to briefly go over the Lacey's flood hazard prevention code, including its relationship to, as Ryan said, to FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program and the city's other critical area, and city's other critical area regulations. A city has participated in the NFIP since nineteen eighty, I believe. And by participating in the NFIP affected property owners, i.e. property owners who have land, who own property that located in the, in the floodplain. They, those folks have the ability to purchase federally-backed flood insurance. Lacey, like all jurisdictions that participate in the NFIP, is required to adopt regulations that dictate when and how development can occur in flood hazard areas or in floodplains. And spoiler alert, in Lacey, you really can't develop in the floodplain. Our regulations essentially prohibit all new development within floodplain areas. To make matters even simpler, Lacey flood hazard areas are very limited. And I'm going to put a map up on the screen here. Let's see what the easiest way to do this is. Try this. And let me zoom in. Can you all, oops, there we go. Can you all see it's a bit, some pieces of a map here?
Yeah.
Okay, so as you can see, our floodplain areas, the areas that are, the orange and orange striped are, are very limited in Lacey. And by, for the most part, it's limited to the actual lakes themselves. You can see Hicks Lake here, Long Lake, and Patterson, Southwick Lake here, and it was all the wetland complexes that are associated with those lakes. And then also Woodland Creek. But by and large, the, like I said, the floodplain area in Lacey follows exactly the, the the boundaries of the lakes and the Woodland Creek. So we don't have a lot of areas where floodplain is located in areas of intense development. There's also a very tiny little bit of floodplain down here at the very southern end of the city in Indian Summer. And so our flood hazard regulations are just one component in a suite of critical area protection codes that dictate how development occurs and occurs in environmentally sensitive areas. In nearly all areas of floodplain in Lacey, the land is also overlain by other wetlands, shorelines, or both. Because both shorelines and wetland regulations require buffers, this results in development occurring far outside of the boundaries of flood hazard areas. For instance, I think our smallest wetland buffer is forty feet. And the smallest shoreline buffer in the shoreline residential zone is fifty feet. Both of those widths far exceed the base, what's called the base flood elevation, the surrounding the lakes and the wetlands, so. It's kind of, a lot of the, the base flood elevations are almost moot when in Lacey. But despite all this, Lacey is still required, as I mentioned, to adopt flood hazard regulations and to periodically amend those regulations to maintain consistency with the NFIP standards. The current slate, let me stop sharing here. The current, the current slate of proposed amendments are actually all considered mandatory changes and were provided to the city by the Department of Ecology's liaison. They actually audited our, our code for us and handed it to us in a pre-package and said, these are, you guys are in pretty good shape. And all these amendments are, are required to stay consistent. The amendments largely consist of new, amend, of new definitions, a few amended definitions, revised submittal requirements for floodplain development permits, of which I think we've had zero since I have been here at the city for eighteen years. I think there's some provisions that allow for the floodplain administrator to request additional studies or documentation when reviewing those permits. And then there are some updates to performance standards that are intended to prevent flood damage. And again, these performance standards apply only to development that happen, that occur, is occurring in the flood hazard areas. And the flood hazard areas, as I said, are very limited in Lacey. So overall, we've got these, the amendments are very minimal, very, pretty straightforward. Lacey really is ahead of the game by just flat-out not permitting new development in the floodplains. There are a few exceptions that could be made to that for for development that's already existing or for utilities, which there's no alternative path. But by and large, a lot of the, a lot of the performance standards that we have in our code currently are, are, I guess, you could consider them sort of overkill because they're performance standards for development types that we wouldn't allow and don't exist currently in Lacey. So barring some sort of major change to FEMA's flood maps, we, just not, not performance standards that we won't expect to apply to, to development because we don't, just not planning on seeing it, so. I'm happy to go through any, any question, any particular subsections of the code that you might have. But I won't go through line for line. So at this point, and we just want to stop and ask if anybody has any questions. We are going to be hoping to shoot for having a public hearing on this early next month. So we'll ask the planning commission to move that forward. But if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to get into that with you guys.
Yeah, so traditionally, what, what my experience has been, if somebody has an existing structure within the flood zone, if something happens to that, they're allowed to build within the same footprint. Is that true in Lacey?
That's generally true, yes. If you are, any existing development does need, it is required to be brought into conformance as much as possible. So that may, for example, entail putting in a sub-pump system if the development, say, is below the base flood elevation or certain types of drainage treatment, that kind of thing. But you certainly couldn't expand the existing footprint of anything, but any existing, but you're correct, any existing use would, would be allowed to rebuild, but they would just need to be, the rebuilt part would just need to meet the, the current regulations.
Yeah, my experience has been that they need to elevate the structure
Yep.
above the known high-flood watermark.
Exactly. Yep.
I'll, I'll just mention too that in addition to these regulations, FEMA has also updated our flood mapping as well. And the flood mapping has become much more accurate over time. I think up till a few years ago, we were still using FEMA flood maps that were probably from the eighties, maybe the late seventies. And now they're much more accurate. We're able to use them through GIS, through, you know, overlaying GIS layers over aerial photographs and are now able to get much more accurate when it comes to determining what might be in a flood zone or not. And like Samra said, most of our flood zones are around lakes. So, you know, that's the, really affecting the, the small handful of structures that we have that are maybe built, you know, before shoreline codes or those kinds of things where they're built kind of right at the edge of the lake, where you might have a lake level that would rise high enough to flood them is really, you know, the, the, the small handful that we do have that would, would apply to. And I think in the staff report, Samra, you had some information about how many flood claims there'd been.
Yes, so there are currently thirty-four policies within the City of Lacey. And to date, since we entered the program in nineteen eighty, there have been three paid claims worth a grand total of eight thousand dollars, eight thousand eighty-eight dollars. So it gives you a pretty good idea of really the, the scale of, or lack thereof, of flood claims we have in Lacey. We're really fortunate in that, in that regard. If you go up north, some of the jurisdictions like Kent and Auburn have, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of development in the floodplain, especially the, like, if you drive through the Kent Valley, that entire area with all those warehouses is, is, is in the floodplain. And that's a big, that's, you know, a really big issue that they're having to grapple with right now is what to do about all that intense commercial development. So we're fortunate.
Eight more questions? So is the plan, the November seventh meeting, to have that public hearing?
I would like to shoot for that, yeah. That works for the planning commission.
Ryan?
Nodding.
Nodding.
Yep, yep, yep. That's the, the plan. You know, the idea is to get this to the council as quickly as possible. We were put on warning by FEMA that if we don't adopt these in a fast, if we don't take fast action on this, we could be removed from the program. I, I highly doubt that would be the case, but we have been put on warning. So we need to get this to the, to the council relatively quickly. Samra mentioned it really applies to a very small handful of properties. And the, most of these updates, I would say, are, are, you know, just kind of housekeeping in nature more than anything. So not a, not a huge, I, I don't expect any members of the public to come out for this one.
Okay, there could be thirty-four people.
Could be.
True.
Alrighty, with that, no other questions, we will move on to number B, land acknowledgement policy, Ryan?
Yep, thanks, Samra.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Sam.
Hi, Sam.
So I, I think you all may be aware that about a month ago, the city council adopted a land acknowledgement policy. And it will apply to the planning commission. And so the purpose of tonight was to, number one, I'm going to share my screen and walk through you what the land acknowledgement policy actually entails. And then number two is to, is for the planning commission to discuss and determine how you would like to recognize the land acknowledgement policy, whether that be in your agendas or at the start of the meetings, those kinds of things. So with that, I'm going to share my screen and bring up the resolution that the council adopted. So I hope you can all see something that says Exhibit A at the top. Okay, perfect. So some stuff around on my screen so I can see better here. So the council about a month ago adopted, this is Resolution eleven thirty-seven, which has a bunch of wherazas and therforths, but basically says that we, the council adopted a land acknowledgement policy back on the twenty-first. And this Exhibit A is really the, the, the policy itself. And I'm going to point to kind of the purpose of the land acknowledgement policy, which is here, which is a land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes, pays tribute to, expresses gratitude and respect for, affirms the ongoing relationship between indigenous people and the land, and helps raise awareness of the indigenous histories, perspectives, and experiences past, present, and future. And it goes on, there's a, you know, a bullet list there that you can see on the screen that talks about the other kind of things that a land acknowledgement policy does. Basically, it's a, it's a way to recognize that, you know, the city is on historically tribal land and, and then recognizes our relationships with the, the tribes in our areas. So the primary tribe for us is the Nisqually Tribe, which this has been reviewed by and, and essentially, you know, given the, the the approval of the, the Nisqually Tribe. And as I think everybody's aware, we have just right out in the hallway, you know, the, the totem pole, and then the accord that was signed a number of years ago between the, the city council and the Nisqually Tribe. So we have a, a rich history of, of coordinating and cooperating with the Nisqually Tribe. Other tribes in the area include the Squawks and Indian Tribe, and then also the Chehalis Tribe, who are also consulted in this as well. So this is the full City of Lacey land acknowledgement. So basically saying that we are on ancestral land that was part of the Treaty of Medicine Creek back in eighteen fifty-four and acknowledge this is tribal homeland before the, basically settlers became part of Lacey. And then also recognizes the Nisqually-Lacey Accord of twenty-eleven and commits to partnering in the future. So that's the full land acknowledgement policy that the city has adopted. We also, the council adopted an abbreviated version. And so the abbreviated version, the way the council is using that, is they're using it in all of their agendas and those kinds of things, as well as on the face of any plan that are adopted. So basically says, we, you know, the City of Lacey or Lacey City Council are on the ancestral land of tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks and, Squawks and Island Tribe. Acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized, they were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land. Since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity, we recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allow our nation, state, and city to develop as it has today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. So they are using this version of the, the land acknowledgement policy, this, the shortened version. So it's used to open city meetings, events, programs, as part of city plans and reports and other adopted documents that are adopted by the city council. And then on other city signage, markers, maps, and other materials like that. So that brings me to the planning commission, which is here under additionally, the land acknowledgement may be used at the beginning of meetings or other events hosted by the city. Such meetings could include, but not, are not limited to, and that is Section D, city advisory board or commission meetings. And so that's what brings me, brings us to you tonight is, like I said, a discussion to, whether or not potentially to read the, the land acknowledgement policy at the beginning of the meeting, to whether or not to add it to your agendas or any other kind of method of distribution that you would like to, to put the land acknowledgement policy out there as part of your role as the planning commission. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. At this point, probably best to discuss amongst yourself how you would like proceed with this, given any direction to staff. And we'll make sure that this gets put into your future agendas, those kinds of things. However, you would like that to occur.
Ryan, did you tell us what, are we the first one you're presenting this to?
Yeah, I, I'm the staff for the planning commission, so because I am, then you're, you're it. I don't know if I'm presenting this to anybody else.
Okay, I'm just wondering what the other commissions have done. Historical, you know?
Yeah, I can, I can find that out. I can find that out for you, but my, my feeling on this is that different commissions may, may do different things. And, and you, you have the opportunity to do that. And so my recommendation is to, you know, discuss amongst yourself what the, the appropriate role of, of, you know, this land acknowledgement policy is in the planning commission and, and, and bring, you know, put that into your procedures, if you will, because others.
Expectations from the council on this?
Nope, other than each commission is, is given the latitude within the land acknowledgement policy to adopt their own or to, you know, afford their own methods for, for acknowledging the policy.
Okay, so thoughts? Okay, go ahead, dude.
I think that it carries a lot more meaning if things are said out loud versus appearing on an agenda. So my, my preference would be that it's, it's read and said and honored in that way before a meeting.
Can I just add, so I agree with you a hundred percent, but I'd like to add one more thought to it, which is on the agenda, we should have call to order, and then maybe number two would be the reading of the land acknowledgement. And we could, and we should pass it around.
Yes.
The chair should not just read it off every week so that it just becomes a rote thing.
Yeah, that we actually do it.
You know, maybe we call the meeting to order and say, you know, tonight, Gail, we'll read the land acknowledgement order.
Yeah, I like that one.
Whatever.
Nice, yeah.
Okay, with, with reading it, are you talking about the abbreviated version? Yeah, or the twenty-page document. More thoughts?
I didn't, you know, my signature's on that document out there. And we're really, really hard with the Nisqually Tribe to make that happen, yeah. I know the council members, myself included at the time, were very honored to actually make that public and make a very public show that we had made it happen. And the Nisqually Tribe Council on, on their part did the same thing. And so I think reading it out loud is important. I like the idea of rotating it through because we're each going to give our own tone to that, and it doesn't become just this rote thing where the chairman at the beginning of every meeting is just, okay, here we go. But yeah, I I agree with reading it out loud.
Other thoughts?
I don't necessarily think it should appear on the minutes as a full statement every time.
I don't think we're planning on putting it into the minutes, but
Just, I think
Are you talking about the agenda?
He suggested that we read it.
That we don't forget it. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I I would recommend, I I appreciate the idea of of passing it around and and giving everybody a chance to to read it. What what I might recommend is that we do include it on the agenda so that whoever's leading that has that in front of them. So we don't need to worry about printing out copies or that people don't have copies, that, you know, we have it on the agenda and then it's read by every by someone at every meeting. I think that a hundred percent would meet the intent of the the policy.
Although memorization is a good brain activity.
What, who are you, sir? Okay, any more discussions?
I I think that it it does have a lot of power to honor and acknowledge the people that have been stewards of the land since time immemorial. And I'm thinking that for more formal meetings, because we do have to, we have the abbreviated, that seems like your everyday and acknowledgement, but then for maybe public hearings or something, that we actually honor the full land acknowledgement. I don't know if if that would be something that we could have two different versions or two different uses.
How long is the whole one?
Let's just hear.
Substantially longer.
Two minutes to read.
Yeah.
So on times that you do public hearings, you're saying that you prefer, what your thoughts are, you prefer the longer version be read?
Just thinking that might be maybe a little bit of a more formal occasion to read the acknowledgement in its entirety.
Okay. Okay, we're all, so far, we're all good with all that? Ryan, you get that all down?
Yeah, so just to summarize, I think what I heard is, well, number one, include it in every agenda, the abbreviated policy. Number two, the abbreviated policy will be read by a different member at each meeting. And then number three, the full policy would be read, or acknowledgement would be read by the chair at, we'll say, an important meeting at at the discretion of the chair as to what the, you know, at at what level of importance that that meeting should be. Does that show hands or a nod around the table? Does that all sound good?
That's good, yeah.
Okay, so what what I'll do is I will we we need to do a minor update to our procedures, kind of manual or our rules of procedure for the the Planning Commission, because we're going to be updating our meeting times anyway. So what I'll do is, in addition to amending the the times and dates that the Planning Commission will be meeting, I'll also put in some draft language that the Planning Commission can review in there about how to handle the the land acknowledgement policy consistent with what you provided here tonight. So any other questions, comments, feedback?
Are we changing the time or we're just correcting to the time that we are already meeting?
Saturday morning.
Six AM.
So the, on a, you know, on a different subject is the is the meeting times, which we've discussed. I know there were probably some planning commission members that weren't at that meeting when we discussed that. So this is probably a good time to be able to that.
Let's, let's move on in the agenda then.
Okay, perfect.
Done with the the land acknowledgement. And we provided direction. So we fulfilled what we need to do there. And let's bring this up under old business because we've talked a little bit about it. So go ahead, Ryan, sorry.
Yeah, so the meeting schedule, so I think everybody is aware that the city council is due to vote to change their meeting days and times to Tuesdays. So they'll be meeting essentially weekly on on Tuesdays, work sessions and and council meetings alternating. So that means that they'll be there in the in building at six, six o'clock PM, same time as you guys have been on those first and third Tuesdays, which means the Planning Commission is going to have to find a different time after the first of the year. And so at the last meeting, we went through some different options. And at this point, tentatively landed on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, six o'clock PM as at that time. There are challenges to moving it to other days of the week. Specifically Mondays, I think are, we already have the the meeting is, meeting room is already booked by some entities on Mondays as well as, let's see, that would be Thursdays, right? So it was, it really came down to the only time that there was not somebody already meeting in the council chambers would have been those the second and fourth Wednesdays. So without booting somebody else out, our only option at this point is the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. So that would happen after the first of the year.
Ryan, I'm on my HOA board, and we always meet the fourth Wednesday of the month. So I'm not sure how to reconcile that from serving, you know, my commitments.
Absolutely. So that's that's why we're bringing it up right now, because I think it worked for the members that were in in attendance at that last meeting. But Judy, I think you were, you were not there, so we wanted to bring it up here tonight so that, you know, we could talk about those kinds of conflicts. Anybody else on, have?
That's Saturday at seven o'clock in the morning.
We meet from six to nine.
Oh.
The fourth, the fourth Wednesday of the month. Every month, yeah. Okay, so I'm the only one with the conflict then? Okay.
Yeah, so we may need to figure something out, whether that's, you know, a a kind of maybe an every other, you know, you kind of have, need a split time so we can find out a way that you could attend some planning commission meetings and some HOA board meetings.
Maybe even on on that night, do a portion here because we go for three hours with the HOA. So maybe do the first hour here and then go there. But I appreciate the discussion.
Yeah, and you're always welcome to do that via Zoom if that saves you some time so you don't have to run into city hall, you know, and then leave and go back to burning campus, that kind of thing. Okay, so anybody else kind of generally hearing that that Monday, second and fourth Monday or Wednesday is of the of the month are amenable to everybody? Is that what I'm understanding?
It actually works better for me than Tuesday, so.
Okay, so what we'll do is, go ahead.
Me and Mark have no issue with it.
Perfect. We'll be thinking about you.
That's right. I'm the board secretary.
Were you, were you not at the meeting where they voted that is?
That's why she doesn't want to listen.
Okay, so that being said, we will move on to communications and announcements, which included this kind of this topic. We have, our next meeting is November seventh, which will, at this point, include a public hearing.
Yep, so let me go through the calendar real quick. I know what's in your guys' packets, but it's at the at the end. So I'm just going to share my screen so that we can all see it together. All right, so we're now here, November seventh. So we'll do next meeting, the public hearing on the flood management code updates should be a five to ten-minute topic. A a weighty one with number two, the work session on the neighborhood code, neighborhood commercial code amendments. So this is essentially the culmination of the neighborhood commercial process that you all have been involved in, started at an open house essentially almost a year ago now at Salish Middle School and now culminate in draft amendments to the zoning text related to neighborhood commercial areas. So Hans will bring that forward at the next meeting. Right now, it's going through kind of an internal review. So once it gets to the Planning Commission, we'll also start getting that in front of the the public as well, in anticipation of a public hearing on that, which we'll get to here in a little bit. As well, we'll also do a work session on a major overhaul to our capital facilities plan. So that's the culmination of a couple of years' work to update our capital facilities plan. The last update to that was back in twenty nineteen. And this time, it includes some a government facilities master plan, which is some crucial information that's going to guide how city hall grows over time, our public workshop, animal services building and other kind of what we call general government building. So
Actually includes a police station?
It does. It includes the police station as well. Correct. And then, no, at this point, November twenty-first would be our public hearing on the capital facilities plan. December fifth, a public hearing on the neighborhood commercial code amendments. I would anticipate, unlike the other ones, the flood management and the capital facilities plan, which I don't expect it will have too much public feedback on, neighborhood commercial, I think we'll get a substantial amount of of feedback on. There's been people that have really been engaged in this process, and I would anticipate that you'll get a a a good amount of comment on that. I I think we're not expecting you to make a recommendation necessarily at that meeting. But, you know, consider the testimony and then come back for a future work session on the the code amendments there. And then also, December fifth would be a basically a bylaw amendment for your meeting dates and times. And then also, we'll amend the the bylaws so that they reflect the the land acknowledgement policy like we talked about tonight. And then December nineteenth is basically the week of Christmas, so looking at canceling that one. So with that, yeah.
I have a question about the capital facilities. When we go to public hearing on that, you acted like there wouldn't be very many people there. I'm, I'm thinking when you're talking some of the stuff that we're going to be talking about, like building from, from the, from animal services to to the police station, that we could find ourselves. Is the finance director going to be there?
He he probably will not be there, but all of the materials have been developed hand in glove with the finance director. So at this point, you know, we've, we've gone out to various community events to try to engage the public in discussions about the capital facilities plan, about the the need for new buildings and new facilities and those kinds of things, and the cost associated with them. And the feedback we're getting from the public is is, we're not getting a lot of feedback. So you know, while I think there's a lot of potential for for that, you know, feedback to occur, and we would like to have those discussions, we just haven't gotten that that amount of feedback from people at this point on those those topics.
In the financing of the, of at least, please, I heard the police station is, will not create new taxes on on the community, correct?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I think there will be some council manic action that would put, you know, an additional levy out there, I believe. For the most part, the most of the money is coming from general fund sources.
No, there there will be levying asked for the
Oh, okay.
Your microphone is going in and out.
Yeah, we didn't get much of that, right?
I'm sorry, no, no additional tax.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I had heard that, and I was a little surprised that, with that, but was, okay, if they've got it figured out, that's why I was asking if the finance director would be there. Because that's would be what people are going to ask, right?
Right, right.
Gail says as long as the prices of the food truck don't go up, we're fine.
All right.
Yeah.
Work that into things.
Thank you.
That's that panorama view.
Well, we're poor, you know, and we're old. We need help.
Okay, anything for the good of the order?
Just, I will not be at the November twenty-first meeting.
That's Thanksgiving week.
Yes, Thanksgiving.
That's Thanksgiving week. I'm surprised there's a meeting actually. A lot of people travel that week.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
That might be tricky.
Okay, well, let me know if you're not available. We can, we can definitely work things around that week and and push that November twenty-first item back to the first meeting in December. There's no problem with that.
Thanksgiving is the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, oh.
Well, let us know what what.
Yeah, we'll do. So that that's the public hearing night for the capital facilities plan. We could move that potentially back to December fifth, I think, would be that first meeting in December. And wrap everything into the one big meeting in December and not meet, not meet the week of Christmas or the week of Thanksgiving.
That makes sense. I think even from a participation perspective, I think it, you know.
Yeah, if we don't want the public to participate, we can hold it that way.
There you go.
Yeah, because I, we don't want to get the criticism that we're holding that meeting or that public hearing in a holiday week.
Yeah.
Which
Agreed.
accused of purposely scheduling it then to exclude public comment.
Sleazy scheduling.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So we'll see how that might look, Ryan.
Yep, agreed. Can adjust things for sure.
Anything else? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.